Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of May 11th. As a preliminary matter, this is Dan Carpenter, acting as Chair this evening. Before we go any further, I would like to announce that Ken Holstrom resigned from our board effective May 1st. We wish him and his family well in their next adventure. If I could confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium? I'm not hearing Lionel.
No, he is here, but he's muted, so I'll let him know to unmute. But he is here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're all set now.
We can hear you, thanks. Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes, here.
Okay. Town officials and employees participating, Mrs. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Kazanovich?
Here.
Mrs. Kwiatkowski?
Here.
Okay. We do have a few public hearings on National Grid poll locations, and there's a call in number for those who wish to speak during those public hearings. Is there a National Grid representative joining us who will be speaking under these items?
Yes, Steve Susie from National Grid.
Okay, thank you, Steve. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable. Public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow for public comment under public hearings, Agenda Item 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D, the National Grid hearings. For the public to join the meeting by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 and use access code 235-235-861, All supporting materials that have been provided to board members are available on the town's website, auburnguide.com, on the Board of Selectmen page, under Remote Meeting Documents. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Also, please note, each vote taken will be by roll call tonight. All right. Sorry for that long preamble.
It's okay.
So, our first item is a petition by National Grid in Verizon, New England, for poll location on Church Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Just waiting for a second.
Dan, hold on one moment, this is Julie speaking. Just hold on one minute.
Lionel's second.
All right, and just so you know, Tristan is having some trouble with his volume.
Okay.
He was on, and he's on, but his volume is muted for some reason. It comes back again and out, so Tristan is right back on again now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so, we have a poll location on Church Street, this is Item 2A. We have a representative from National Grid, if Mr. Susie would like to give us a brief overview of what is being proposed?
And Acting Chair, Mrs. Goodrich has her hand raised. Just as a point of order, we need to take a vote on opening the hearing.
You're absolutely right, thank you, sorry. So, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now that we've observed the proper format, Mr. Susie, if you could give us a brief overview.
Okay, so, what we're proposing is just to relocate the existing pole 3 on Church Street, approximately five feet in the northwest direction, in order for the Mary Stone School project. We have to move it because the new sewer pipe aligned for those apartments are going to be right in line with the existing pole. So, we need to relocate that five feet, and then the other petition would be from there, put in an underground wires and conduits, parallel to the street, before it turns inward into the lot, to the transformer, which will power and feed the new building.
Okay. Is there going to be any loss of service to the residents on Church Street or Central
We shouldn't. There might be some momentary outages in order to do that, but a lot of the, we'll put the pole in first and transfer the wires, but to energize things completely once the transformer is in, there might be a small outage, maybe a half hour, hour, something like that, just to get things energized. But I don't anticipate any large scale outage, no.
Okay. Do you know exactly, not exactly, but roughly how long, can you give an estimate of how long this work will take?
Well, it's part of the whole project itself. What the petition is to relocate a pole, then we'd have to transfer some transformers. When we do that, of course, some of the people who are on that transformer, they're going to have no power until we turn it back on again. But that wouldn't be like for two or three days or anything like that, it would just be momentary, a few hours, to do that. And when this is going to be done, we still have to get the easement from the new developers of the building before we can install any new projects. And there's some other system improvements being done, pole transfers, replacing the pole, rearranging some of the lines that feed the residential street. Westview Street, we're going to change the pole that primary line comes off of, so this can be done in different stages, and how long it takes, will it take, will be determined also by the new developers of the school, when that finally gets officially sold.
Okay, thank you. If you have nothing else, Mr. Susie, I'll open up to board member comments. Does anyone have any questions for the representatives? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So, I'm looking at Exhibit A, and I'm also looking at the abutters list, and on Exhibit A, it appears that 14 Church Street is right next to the Mary D. Stone School, which is where they're moving the pole, but I don't see number 14 Church Street on the abutters list, and I'm just curious about that.
I'm not sure why that happened. Yeah, 14 Church Street does the but, they're not going to be really affected too much. They're going to stay the same. I don't know why, but they're really not going to be affected by this. As I have at Pole 4, is not going to be replaced, their secondary wire and their service wire will stay, so they probably won't even be affected by an outage that much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so I just, I guess my concern would be procedurally, if we would have any issues, and that would be through Mr. Carpenter to the town manager, if abutters weren't properly notified, if we would have any issues with that. Through the Chair, that would be a question for Town Council. I would share your concern, Mrs. Goodrich. I think if there was a requirement to notify abutters, and there were one or more abutters that weren't notified, then I would probably recommend that the vote be postponed to make sure all abutters are notified properly.
Okay. Is there any other comment? No, go ahead, Mrs. Jacobson.
No, this is Mrs. Goodrich, if I may.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, again, I just, I don't have an issue with the actual petition, but I do have a concern with abutters not being notified, and I would support Mrs. Jacobson's recommendation to advertise properly.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else, Mrs. Goodrich?
Just if there are any abutters here tonight, that they could be heard tonight, so that they don't have to come back to another hearing.
Yeah, absolutely. Before we open it up to abutters or residents who might have questions, does any other board member have a question? Hearing none, okay. Are there any abutters or residents who'd like to speak to this? Sorry, who's speaking?
I think you heard me, Steve Susie from National Grid, just wondering, is that 14 Church Street not being on the abutter list? Was that due to National Grid error or the town error?
Through the Chair, I'll have to look at it, I will have to see where that list originated from.
All right.
I'm an abutter.
Who's speaking? Okay, can you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Robert Scanza, 11 Church Street, directly across from Mary D. Stone School.
Okay.
My question is, I did look at the petition, and it did show that the poles will be on the other side of the street. I just wanted to confirm first that that is the case, that the existing pole is just going to move on the opposite side of this street. And then my second question is, there's a rather large transformer close to my driveway in the church parking lot, the rear church parking lot, and I'm wondering if there is going to be any construction done to that pole or that transformer.
Okay.
On my design, that transformer on the church, that feeds the church on that property, I do plan to relocate that to Pole 2. It isn't in the petition, because where we put our transformers on the poles, the town doesn't need to approve that, but I do plan on moving that transformer to Pole 2. And that would feed both you and the church.
Okay, so, is that transformer in the church parking lot going to exist after it is?
No, not as it's planned right now, no.
And my first question about the poles all being on the other side of the street, on the sidewalk side, that is the case correct?
Yeah, they're going to be, Pole 3 is going to be relocated just five feet across the street, in line with the existing wires. Pole 2 is going to be replaced and upgraded, and Pole 4 is going to stay the same, we don't need to upgrade that.
Okay, thank you. Just one other question, second more of a concern. I do know that my neighbor, the resident at 14 Church Street, he has three young kids there, I do have a young daughter myself. I was properly notified, but I just want to make sure we're notified moving forward of when construction is going to start, because I just, you know, there are some safety concerns that I have regarding my child being outside and whatnot.
Like I said before to the board, when this is going to be started will depend on when we officially get a payment for any bills that might be sent, or we have to wait until the town and the new developers actually, Primrose Development actually buys the property, and then this can be done in several stages. Like I said, while we do that, we're just going to have one truck put in the pole, put in the anchor, and then typically would have a truck just transferring the wires. So, I don't know, there really shouldn't be any safety concerns. The Primrose Development is going to be digging and doing the underground trench to the new transformer, and then when they're finished and they put in conduit to our specs, we take over ownership and then put the transformer on a pad that they're going to install. So, when they're going to do the underground digging, that's something that Primrose would have to do. Typically, and this is how the rates are structured in Mass, the developer will install underground conduit to our specs, will make sure someone inspects it, but then we take over when it's all done, so I don't know when they're going to do the underground part.
Yeah, and that's great, I appreciate that. With regard to my general safety concern, it's that transformer that sits above my driveway, it's rather large, and anytime someone would be up there moving anything, transferring wires, doing anything with that, I would just want my daughter not driving the driveway, is all I'm saying, so I'm just looking for notification prior to that being done.
Well, I can note just when we're doing it on that day, to have someone, as a courtesy, come over and just say, hey, we're going to be working here, and if you want to move your car, or something like that, so, we could do that, and I can note that.
That would be great, thank you. I had heard that Dr. Brunel was retiring, I don't know if that's true, but people speak very highly of her, congratulations, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Are there any other residents or abutters who'd like to speak on this hearing? Okay, hearing none, any last board member comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So...
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. Through you to the town manager, you know, I'm happy to take a conditional vote, as long as the abutter at 14 has an opportunity to speak with National Grid, or I'm happy to continue it and make that motion, but I do want to be sure, as I said, that especially now learning that they have three young children, I do want them to have an opportunity to be heard. Whichever is the best way to move forward, I'm happy to make that motion.
I think to be clean about everything, and we've given people an opportunity to speak for the record, I think it's probably best to make a motion to continue the hearing, and then we can, at the next meeting, we can have these folks speak to us on the record, so that we have a record that that has happened.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think...
So, Mr. Chairman, hearing none, I'll make a motion that we continue.
Okay. We need just a date, so, our next scheduled meeting would be the 25th, which is the holiday, so we probably wouldn't be meeting until the 26th, which would coincidentally be six days after the election.
Make a motion that we continue the hearing to 26.
All right. I heard a second.
Make a motion that we continue the hearing.
Lionel Berthium, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, this is continued to May 26th. All right, thank you. Next public hearing.
Can I just, was 14 the only one who may not have been on the abutter list, or there are other abutters that I could talk to before the next hearing?
What I'll suggest, Mr. Susie, is that you get in touch with the town manager's office and work that out through them. I know you have a question as to the list, so I think that's the appropriate course of action, is to contact the manager's office, and they will give you direction, okay?
Okay.
All right, we have a second hearing, poll location hearing, also on Church Street, Item 2B. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion to open the hearing.
Mrs. Goodrich makes a motion to open the hearing. Who is second? Thank you, Lionel, okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. We are open on the second Church Street petition. Mr. Susie, if you can give us a brief on this as well.
Well, I just said, for the underground petition, it would just be for on the Church Street, from the new pole, Pole 3, running the underground conduit along Church Street, you know, before it curves inward to feed the new transformer pad 3-1.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board comments or questions? I do note that the abutter at 14 Church also is not on this list, so we'll have to address that as well. Are there any comments or concerns from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, I just have the same concerns and would respectfully request that we continue this.
Absolutely, I agree. Are there any abutters or residents who'd like to speak on this petition who have been notified?
This is Cindy Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I jumped in briefly to the end of the first topic, so it sounds like you were continuing that until the 26th?
Yes, there's an issue with notification, but you're welcome to ask any questions at this time.
Can you just tell me the beginning of that, is it for the pole?
Yes. I will have Mr. Susie, who is the National Grid rep, give you an overview of the previous petition, just for information purposes.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, so we needed, because pole petitions and underground line petitions are separate, we have to get two petitions for the same job. So, the pole petition is to move Pole 3 in a northwest direction, which is further towards Westview Street, five feet, and then from that, new pole is going to be the riser pole, where there's going to be the underground conduit being used to service the new apartment at the Mary Stone School.
Okay.
Are you good, Mrs. Ryan?
The 26th, right?
Yes. So, if you have any further questions, you can certainly, assuming we'll still be in remote mode, so hopefully we will catch you there.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Okay, thank you. Do any other abutters or residents? Yes, Lionel?
Mr. Chair, I got, Mrs. Ryan came on, what is her address? Is she the abutter at 14 by any chance?
No, she's a 2-16, she's on the corner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further board comments or abutter or resident comments? Anything else, Mr. Susie?
No, for this petition, no.
Okay.
I actually do have kind of a...
Hold on. Yeah? Is this Mrs. Ryan?
Yeah, I do have a kind of affiliate question. Did you do drawings on the sidewalk that say NG, something else?
Yes, those are markings for dig save, so when we have a, when we do go to replace the pole, people know, oh, I have to check this area. So, yeah, I did mark those locations.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I am a deacon at the Congregational Church, and our boiler is in trouble, and we're going to have to replace it, and they thought NG meant natural gas, and I thought not. So, that will be a good clarification, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Scanza, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. This is just about the branch that ends over Church Street, it kind of hangs on wires. I think it's on my property, but it might be on my neighbor's property as well, I'd have to look at my deed. But I guess my question is for Mr. Susie, does that branch need to come down? Have you examined that at all, and if so, how would we go handling that?
Which address is this?
I'm at 11 Church Street, across the street from Mary D. Stone School.
Okay, you know, typically what we would do, if something is interfering with our lines, we would go to, you know, try to trim that to prevent any damage to our lines. We are going to be taking a tree guy off that is currently attached to Pole 4, that will be, you know, taking off in my design, but we wouldn't typically cut things across the street from our wires, because they don't affect it. So, if there's something on your property that you would want cut, that's on the street, that's something you would have to talk to, if it's in the street, right away to the town, or something you would have to do on your own.
Okay, thank you. If anything does change, if you examine that, is it affecting any lines? It's a rather large branch, just let me know, give me ample notification, so I can discuss it with you.
Okay, I will do so.
All right. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing to May 26th.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to May 26th.
Okay, that's Mr. LaLiberty, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, it is unanimous, thank you. And moving right along, we have another poll location hearing, this one on Elm Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing for Agenda Item 2C?
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Goodrich makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
So, LaLiberty seconded it. Roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, we are open. Mr. Susie, if you can just give us a synopsis of what's happening on Elm Street, please.
Now, per front, but can I get into the agenda items? What do you want to be doing for 105 or 103?
This is the poll location on Elm Street.
Excuse me, this is Cindy Ryan, can I leave the meeting now?
Yes, you may, if you don't want to hang out with us.
I have Bible study. Jesus, Dan.
Thank you, have a good day.
Okay, bye.
Let me try and see what this... Let me try and see what this says here, it doesn't have an address for me.
Mr. Chair, I'm reading that it's a new home at one oh five Elm Street.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Berthium, so it is a new home on one oh five Elm Street.
Okay, I have both of them up here. So for one oh five Elm Street, we're planning to install a stub or support pole, thirty-two dash eighty-four with anchor in the public way, approximately thirty-five feet southwest of existing pole thirty-two, across the street, in order to support the overhead wires being installed to serve a new home at one hundred and five Elm Street.
Okay.
The reason why we had to do the stub pole across the street is because there seems to be like a drainage culvert right behind pole thirty-two, so I couldn't put a push brace or anything like that. We have to install the, in order to support it properly, we need to install thirty-two dash four, thirty-two dash eighty-four across the street.
Okay. Are there any board questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, are there any abutter or resident questions?
Yes, excuse me, I actually have a question. My name's Corey Anderson, I'm the homeowner at one oh three B Elm Street. I guess just my question is, I don't know which direction the power runs from, I didn't know what kind of length of time there would have to be interruption in power, how long that would approximately be.
Okay, Mr. Susie?
Yes, for this petition for one oh five, it is just a guy wire, just support, so to support pole thirty-two without having that eventually, you know, tilt over. So there is, there would be no, for thirty-two eighty-four, I anticipate no interruption of service at all, because we're not putting a energized wire up, we're just putting a support wire up.
Oh, okay.
All right, is there any other public comment? Any board comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I lost the last minute or so, my computer had to refresh, so I just get a quick update on what just happened. I heard Mr. Anderson's question, and then I didn't hear anything after that.
Okay, Mr. Susie, can you provide a...
Well, for this year, yeah, it was one oh three B, his question for this new stub pole.
This is one oh five, yes.
Yeah, the stub pole is for one oh five, he wanted to know if there was any, going to be any interruption of service, you know, for the new stub pole, no, because we're not putting up a energized wire of any kind, this is just for support, so there'd be no interruption of service for him.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, that was Mr. LaLiberty's question. Anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion to open, close, continue the hearing? Not open, we already did that. Close or continue?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
Mrs. Goodrich makes a motion to close the hearing. Okay, is there any further discussion? Thank you, Lionel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the petition?
Mr. Chair, this is Lionel Berthium, I'll make a motion to approve the petition for Elm Street National Grid to install one SO pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately sixteen, sixteen hundred twenty-six feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Brook Street and Elm Street, and continuing, continuing approximately thirty-five feet in a southwest direction. National Grid to install pole thirty-two eighty-four with anchor and guy wire, approximately thirty-five feet southwest of existing pole thirty-two, in order to support overhead wires being constructed to serve a new home at one oh five Elm Street.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. LaLiberty seconds it, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to our fourth and final public hearing of the night, also on Elm Street. This apparently is to serve a new home at one oh three A Elm Street. Mr. Susie, if you can give us a brief synopsis of what you'd like to do here.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Lionel Berthium.
Oh, we need to open up.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to open the hearing, please.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, thank you, Lionel, for doing that. Now, Mr. Susie, can you give us a brief synopsis?
Yes, for, for the new home at one oh three A, what we're proposing is just to relocate the existing pole, approximately fifteen feet, this would be existing pole thirty, and we're want to relocate it approximately fifteen feet in the northwest direction, so that way would be within the property line frontage of one oh three A, because from there, once we do that, then we can install the new poles along the new driveway in order to serve the home.
Okay. Are there any board questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we'll open it up to any residents who may have a question, comment, or concern.
Yes, Corey Anderson, one oh three B again, so just the same question, so it sounds like it's an actual pole relocation, didn't know what kind of interruption it was going to be.
For this year, usually, yeah, we relocate the pole, we transfer the wires, usually that would be done live line, however, in my design, we are also updating the transformer that feeds one oh one, one oh three A in your house. So, the, actually, the existing transformer is overloaded right now on pole twenty-nine, so once we put the new pole in, we're gonna remove the old transformer, put a new updated transformer on pole thirty, and once we do that, it'll be a momentary outage, usually transformers to rehang them, it would only take like an hour or two, but that's about it. But that would be, make, make sure that you have submission service, because the old transformer was overloaded.
Okay, and then is it possible to just request notification when that, around when that power is going to be interrupted?
Yeah, usually do, because this is only going to affect maybe three customers or five customers. Typically, we would contact them, we don't put in like lodge, we only do like a mailing when there's like a large scale outage, and we have to like ten, twenty, thirty people or more. Usually, though, when we do that, we do knock on the doors of everyone to make sure that they're aware that they're going to have no power for an hour or two, so that would be it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Seribetics, one oh one A Elm Street in Auburn, do you have any idea when you're going to be doing this approximately?
That would have to be determined. Typically, though, we might even just, you know, install the pole first, then transfer all these things later, but I really don't know how far we're out within, especially now with COVID, we'd still have to get things like easements for the customer, so I don't know when it's going to be scheduled, but it will probably be, because they're building their home, this will be sometime during spring or summer, but for what day, I don't know, that would be determined at a later date.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, any last board comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tristan, through you to Mr. Susie, I know we're talking about summer or spring installment, but with COVID nineteen and us really not knowing when things will be back to normal, do you foresee a change in policy where they won't knock on the door, but maybe we'll just call residents, just out of curiosity?
I don't know. Typically, though, even over not on door, we would still have our face covering and, you know, would be six feet distancing anyway, but we are still reading meters, working, talking with customers, we're just doing the regular distancing. So I, I don't know if they, they're going to change that, but it would be something we can do, right, as of right now, we would be able to do that, and, you know, I can't really comment on any changes the governor might have in the future, but we would, you know, knock on the door and then just stay six feet away.
All right, great, thank you.
While we're talking about notification, if I could, is there any way you could leave a number with the town manager's office, so if, as things progress, people could contact you to see the status of any of these petitions?
Yes, I could, I could give it to people, I'll give it to Julie or anyone in the office, I can give it to anyone right now, my phone number if they want it. But usually, once we design, it's the scheduling rep who would have, or business service rep who would know when things are going to be done, and I'll get that phone number and I'll give that to, you know, the town manager's office, and that's their job to contact customers, you know, the scheduling, so I'll let the town manager's office know.
Thank you so much, that, I think would be of great help to many of the people who would like to have a little more certainty, which we understand is difficult at this time. Is there any final public or board comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chair, this is Lionel, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Goodrich is seconding it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Is there a motion on the petition?
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Berthium, I would make a motion to approve Elm Street National Grid to relocate one JO pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately nine hundred fifteen feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street and Stone Road, Auburn slash Nobry Town Line, and continuing approximately fifteen feet in a southwest direction, National Grid to relocate existing pole thirty and anchor approximately fifteen feet in a northwest direction, so it will be set alongside the driveway and be able to serve the new home at one oh three A Elm Street.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Goodrich seconds it, is there any discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, this, this went very smoothly, and we appreciate everybody dialing in and sharing their concerns.
Thank you very much.
All right, I would entertain a motion to move up item four B, recommendations on the Auburn Town Meeting warrant articles. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Goodrich makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. LaLiberty seconds it, is there any discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are on item four B, recommendations for town meeting. Mrs. Jacobson, do you have anything that you'd like to mention prior to our digging in?
Mr. Chair, thank you for asking, I think we're ready to move forward, I just do want to point out that we do have a number of people who have called in, whether they're department heads or members of the community who sponsored articles, so perhaps you might want to take some of those out of order. We have the school superintendent, the police chief, and Steve Galant, I see, most likely on the item related to the veterans. So just a suggestion, I'm not sure who the other callers are, but those are three that I recognize that are here for warrant article.
Okay, thank you. Well, then why don't we start at the top? Dr. Brunel has, the school committee and administration has articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Would you like to speak to any or all of these? I know some of them are standard from year to year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'm happy to answer any questions, the Medicaid article, the McKinney-Binto article, those are ones in the, the trust ones are ones that come before you annually, again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. One of the new ones is regarding seeking approval of town meeting and in selectment as well this evening. The children in foster care, this current school, they spent about thirty-five hundred dollars transporting them, because they have a right to stay either in their home school or to come here if they move out of town, similar to the way McKinney-Binto runs. We don't know whether this state will have money to fund this, but we would ask your approval so that when they do, that this money would come to us without any further appropriation. The two CIP articles, so we had money set aside in our budget in the CIP to replace the windows at the Randall School. Based on the fact that there is some discussion about, once the safety complex is constructed, if whether the school department administration officers would go to the police station, we've refrained from spending any additional CIP money on the Randall Building until that determination is made. We do have a truck that is twelve years old, as noted, there are some mechanical challenges with it, the fleet maintenance department is great and supports us to the degree they can. We actually use that, that truck to help transport instruments when, when it's in different competitions, and Mr. Fahy drives that and pulls the trailer behind, so we think having it updated, we also use it for some minor snow plowing, an updated truck makes more sense currently. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Are there any board questions for these articles, for the superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Dr. Brunel.
Hi.
Just on the article... Just on the articles you just spoke to, on Article 17 and Article 18, what do you, I mean, this is certainly going to be a long process. What do you anticipate the life expectancy of these windows to be? Are you going to have a problem in like a year or two years? Or do you think you can get through with this work to be a three or four-year project?
So through the chair, that's obviously a great question. We actually have our custodians that are doing some recocking and painting of them now. We will take care of any, if there are any things that fall out, and that has happened on some of them, we take care of that through our regular operating budget. The amount of $45,000 would not have replaced all of the windows anyway. It was going to be done over time. But we feel confident, and by saying we, I mean Mr. Fahey too, that we will be able to be okay with these, barring any unforeseen circumstances for the next few years. Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mrs. Goodrich?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other board questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So because most of these articles are routine articles, especially 13 through 15, I would make a motion that we take Articles 13 through 15 together and recommend. And that's in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to take Articles 13, 14, and 15 and recommend?
Final Berthium will second that.
Thank you, Lionel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous on Articles 13, 14, and 15. Is there a further motion on 16, 17, and 18? Or did we want to hold on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 16, but would like discussion.
Okay. You're making, Mrs. Goodrich is making a motion for discussion. Okay. Thank you, Lionel. By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Could I ask a question on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Through you to Dr. Brunel. Dr. Brunel, if you don't see the money from the state, I assume this money has been allocated already?
Through the chair, yes. So we're obligated to pay these. This is a new ability to be able to get when the state is able to reimburse us, and they are anticipating that when they can, it would be at about a 20% level. But yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further from board members? So we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Is there a motion on Articles 17 or 18? Or do we want to hold on these?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take these together and vote to recommend.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor from Mrs. Goodrich. Is there a second?
Final Berthium second.
All right. By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
My pleasure. Have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. We have Article 19 from the Veterans Advisory Committee. This is to adopt a section of the law. I believe Mrs. Jacobson mentioned Mr. Galant was on the line to discuss this.
Correct. Mr. Galant is on for Article 19, and the police chief is on.
Is Mr. Galant prepared to speak to this article?
Mr. Galant, if you could get a little closer to your microphone, it was a little hard to hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
That's better. Thank you.
Right ahead, sir. What can you tell us about this article, sir?
Well, to a recommendation that the American Legion in Auburn, which has a regular property tax right now on the nonprofit, he changed to a nonprofit because we fall underneath the American Legion nonprofit. This would be, this article would bring that in line, and the recommendation was $1 million five.
Thank you. Mrs. Jacobson or Mr. Kasenovic, do you have anything on this article?
I'll wait and see. Go ahead, Ed.
So this article, as I understand it, would exempt a portion of current taxation that is currently being assessed to the Legion.
Correct.
As a result of them claiming a, them is a nonprofit entity, not-for-profit.
That is correct.
This would only apply to veteran organizations?
Mr. Chairman, I have had conversations with the assessor's office, and collectively we have no objection to this warrant article.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasenovic. Mrs. Jacobson, do you have anything?
I would, through the chair. I would echo what Mr. Kevin Ovich said. I would say that we discussed it with the assessor's office. We believe that, we support this article. This would only apply to veterans organizations that own property in town, and that is, right now, only applicable to the post that they had undergone such severe hardship through the fire that they had, and they're trying to rebuild and get back underway and resume their operations. We are allowed, under Mass General Law, to raise the exemption to this level, and we feel that it's appropriate to support our veterans in this manner.
Thank you. Are there any board questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. I do support this article. I just do have a question on the language of the article.
The article is the next one up. They're on 19. I'm 20, so until they call me, yeah.
That was, let him know he's on. So.
Yeah, I will let him know.
So I'm asking specifically about the language after the $1,500,000. If used in such association, if the net income from property is used for charitable purposes, I will say that I do support this article, but how will it be determined? And I'm not familiar with this. How will it be determined if the income for charitable purposes or other businesses?
Okay. Hold on one second, Mrs. Goodrich. If people who are not speaking can mute their mic, we're hearing feedback, and it's interfering with the conduct of the meeting. Mrs. Goodrich, once we give it a second, if you could just restate your question, just so that it's clear, I'm sorry.
Okay. And so I do want to be very clear that I do support this article, and I do acknowledge the hardship that they've gone through since the fire. I just want, my question is in the language of the article, specifically where it says, if the net income from the property is used for charitable purposes. I know that, you know, there was a caterer worked out of there, or there were weddings or, you know, events. I just know, I guess my question is, does that have an effect on it? And who determines the net income?
Mrs. Jacobson or Mr. Kasenovic?
Through the chair. I can tell you. Oh, go ahead, Ed.
So I can tell you that the assessor's office, when determining the value of property such as this, they do it based upon an income-to-cost approach, and those costs are identified through a review, annual review by their office.
Okay. Thank you.
So if those costs are outside of charitable purposes, then that income would be counted towards a level of taxation.
Is there anything further, any further questions from board members? Town administration?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. LaLiberty?
That's all. Through you, my question to Mr. Kasenovic is, so is this, I'm not sure I fully understand it. Is it a tax exemption on monies made or on the property tax itself? It must just be on the property tax itself, right? And we're talking?
That is correct. It's the value of the property tax itself.
And so up to, like Mrs. Goodrich, I do support the motion. I was just curious. So would this cover, this would make the property completely tax exempt? I see up to $1.5 million. So it's only up to that amount that would be completely covered? Or based on your question, if they take money that doesn't fall under the category of nonprofit, that would be taxed, but the break goes up to $1.5 million?
Yes. That would be my understanding. Mr. LaLiberty? We don't know what that value is going to be. It is my understanding there's going to be a tear down and a rebuild, so at this point, we don't know what the value of that property is going to be.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Berthium, do you have a question?
I do. So we're basically, and again, I'm in favor of helping out in the wake of their hardship. So basically, we're saying that they're going to be tax exempt from real estate tax, property tax. I'm assuming until such time that they start holding weddings, events, things like that. And as soon as they do start holding those, then does that get reviewed on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, annual basis? At what point does the tax assessor kind of get back involved in it?
Mrs. Jacobson or Mr. Kasenovic?
So this would be examined on an annual basis, not on a monthly basis. So net asset income and cost are submitted to the assessors annually with a review of a one-year, it's a one-year review.
Are you good, Mr. Berthium? Do you have something else? Go ahead.
So as a follow-up, assuming that, let's say, the building was put up by the end of 2021, and they started with their functions in 2022 in January, we would, the assessor would look at the information, I'm assuming on our fiscal year or so, on June 30th, and take a look at the income for the first half of 2022. Is that correct?
So the taxes, the next round of taxes that is billed on a quarterly basis, the first one would be July. It's for an assessment as of the previous January. So this would still line up with assessed values as of January 1.
Okay. Thank you.
So any income, then they have been recognized as of January 1, would be on the following about six-month lag period, and then it's picked up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Galant, do you have anything else for the board? You're still on mute, I think.
I'm on now. I don't have anything else. It's just my duty to bring to the board from the committee.
Thank you for taking the time to do this, and thank you to the committee for researching this and coming up with a great resource to our title post. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything, Mrs. Jacobson or Mr. Kasenovic, anything?
I'm all set.
Finally, would you like to say on these articles? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you both. Is there a motion on Article 19?
Final Berthium, I'll make motion to recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Berthium. Is there a second? Mr. Liberty seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. I understand the police chief is on the line. He has Article 20. Is he available to give a brief synopsis? I think it's self-explanatory. How are you tonight?
Mr. Chairman, are you?
Are you with us? I'm good. This seems fairly self-explanatory, but if you have anything for the board, please feel free to share it.
Essentially, what this is, is a request for $1,600. We were able to buy some Narcan out of our current budget. However, we were only able to equip half of the patrolmen and supervisors. So half the department has it at one time. Basically, what they're doing is swapping off its shift change. So that means that when they're out working, paid details, or, excuse me, working overtime, they may not necessarily be able to take Narcan with them. So we're trying to equip the other half of the department.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the chief. Good evening, Chief.
Hello. How are you, Mrs. Goodrich?
Good. So I just have a question. I know you just said that half of the cruisers or, you know, officers have Narcan now, and this is to give Narcan, you know, make available Narcan for the other half. I also know that Narcan has an expiration date, usually within one year. Is this 1,600 going to be enough to give all of your offices Narcan and potentially replace any that may expire during this time before the next town meeting? Want to be sure of the 1,600.
We should be fine until then. I'm understanding that you can get a year and a half maximum shelf life out of it. Yeah.
Thank you.
We've actually just used it twice in the last week.
Ben?
That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other board, are there any other board questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Through you.
Lillibity, go ahead.
Thanks. Through you to the town manager. I know that our fire department has been working longer shifts due to the coronavirus. I was wondering if they have similar issues with not being able to have enough Narcan at the ready or if this is, this is really just a problem with the police department with officers working overtime and just trying to make sure that everyone has it. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Through the chair, the fire chief has not asked me for any concerns that he's had, but I'm going to turn to the police chief because I think he may also have had conversations with the fire chief.
Go ahead, Chief, please.
Thank you. Mr. Lillibity, it's my belief, and you'd have to check with the fire chief to be 100% certain, but it's my belief that once they dispense it, they replace it relatively quickly. I think they have some extra on hand that they put back on the fire truck and the ambulance and then they replace it from there. So I think they're, they're pretty good.
All right. That's good here. Thank you.
Is there any other comment for the chief or questions from board members? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the article?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Mr. Lillibity makes a motion to recommend Article 20. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Goodrich seconds it by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for taking time out of your day.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it.
You have a good night.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious if anyone is here from the DPW or sewer superintendent if we need to move those articles out?
I was just going to ask if the moderator is on, if the clerk is on or sewer or cemetery.
For the chair, I can tell you that the town clerk notified Sharon a few minutes ago that she's unable to participate tonight, so you might want to hold off on that article because she won't be able to answer any questions on it tonight.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Have you heard Mrs. Jacobson from the moderator? Is he?
I have not heard.
Okay. I don't hear him.
Right. And I can't tell you that, I believe, sorry. I believe that this was something that the town clerk may have been also going to answer questions on, but I had not heard from the moderator.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm going to just turn to Sharon. Sharon did some outreach. Sharon, was the moderator going to be participating tonight?
I have not heard.
Okay.
I don't hear him.
Right. And I can't tell you that, I believe, sorry. I believe that this was something that the town clerk may have been also going to answer questions on, but I had not heard from the moderator.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm going to just turn to Sharon. Sharon did some outreach. Sharon, was the moderator going to be participating tonight?
I have not heard. I have not heard from him, no.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'm not sure if the sewer superintendent or the DPW director is going to speak to these next 27 through 30. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson and ask her guidance.
What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is if you could just move on to the other items and I will just verify if the DPW director will be participating on the call. I can see that there is one call on there that I don't necessarily recognize, so I'm not sure, but let me double check. I'm going to mute my phone so I won't get in the way of your discussion, but if you want to take the items prior to that, I could double check if Mr. Coils is participating.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you.
All right. We'll start back at Article 1, which is by the moderator, to hear reports of the finance committee, other town offices and committees. I don't know if there is a motion, one way or the other. It's a pro forma thing. Personally, I don't see the need to recommend, but if, I'm open to whatever the board would like to do. Is there a motion on Article 1?
Mr. Chairman, I would just comment that we generally don't take a position on this article, so I don't, I agree with you, there's really no need to take a position. That would be my view.
Okay. Would you make a motion to defer to the petitioner on that, Mrs. Goodrich? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to Article 2, which is, go ahead, Mrs. Goodrich. Sorry.
I was muted. I mean, I don't think we need to take any action on that, but I'm happy to defer if that's what, the motion you'd like.
Yeah. I just think it's certainly nothing to do with the article. It's just a pro forma article. If we could defer to the petitioner just as a matter of record, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Lillibity seconds it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Article 2 is to fix the salary and compensation of elected town offices. This is by the town manager. I don't know if we would like to skip this until she's available because I know she's occupied. So why don't we go to Article 3 to determine, by the finance committee, to determine what sums of money the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate. I won't read the whole article, but this is the budget question. Do we have any questions, comments from board members, actually? Before we go to board member comment, Mr. Kazanovich, do you have anything you'd like to share on this article?
Yeah, I kind of, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make some comments at some point, but I just want to make it clear, I think, given what we are experiencing now, certainly we're going to have to revisit the budgets from top to bottom. That includes everything from capital to the operational side of the budget. Certainly, it's scary what we are hearing at the state level, potential revenue loss that the state has put out there, anywhere from $4 to $6 billion. Certainly, we know there's going to be a trickle-down effect to the local municipalities and state aid. We don't know, that's a big number. We don't know how big of a cut we're looking at, but certainly we've already started some other scenarios dealing with a significant revenue loss. So we asked the departments to submit to us a, basically a level funded budget. Everyone was asked to submit a revised budget that is 2.75% lower than what's been recommended under Article 3. Those were due in last Friday. There are still a few that we're waiting on, but we're going to start taking a look at those and prepare a model that may best address a, an offset or a loss of revenue across the board. So right now, this budget that's before you under Article 3, it's about a $72 million budget. It's about a 1.6% increase over current fiscal year. This budget under Article 3 utilizes about 59% of Prop 2 and 1/2. It would be, it would be taxing at a rate of 1.47% instead of the allowable 2 and 1/2. But certainly, we have a lot of work in front of us. We know that we're going to have to revisit the budgets sooner than later. We are proposing that we probably have a town meeting over the summer at some point to address a amended budget as a result of the economic crisis we're going through.
Thank you, Mr. Kazanovich. Are there any board questions or comments on this article? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend Articles 4, 3, and 4.
Final Berthium, I'll second.
Okay. We haven't gone to Article 4. Can we just restrict it to Article 3 at this time, Mrs. Goodrich?
I'll change that.
Mr. Chair, I'm okay. I'm okay with recommending 3 and 4 and we can have discussion if you want.
Yeah, we're just, we're just on 3 right now, so let's, just for minutes purposes, let's keep it to the article we're discussing if we could. So Article 3, I believe Mrs. Goodrich has, has something to say.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 3.
Okay. And Mr. Berthium? Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Article 4, which is on the CIP. Mr. Kazanovich, do you have something on this to share with the board?
Sure. So under Article 4, there's a recommendation for total capital of $2,625,596. Of that, about $1,228,000 is funded through tax levy. If you recall, part of our financial policy, EMOCs, 1/10 of 2 and 1/2 since 2012. And since 2012, we've been able to reserve and set aside approximately $1.2 million to offset our, our capital needs. It also provides for borrowing of $720,000 through bond proceeds that would fund this plan. Let me just say once again that we're going to have to revisit all of the elements under Article 4. It may require that we put a freeze on all capital purchases, all depending on what level of revenue we expect to lose. As I said earlier, nothing is protected. Once we revisit the budgets, we have to make provisions to get through a very difficult year and maybe several. This is one area where we may have to apply the brakes and put a freeze on our capital purchases, but certainly too early to determine what impacts we may face under Article 4. But certainly, this is one part of the budget that we would be focusing on once some revenue numbers become known from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Kazanovich. Are there any questions from board members? It sounded like we were pretty set, so I don't want to take any time that people don't. Hearing none. Is there a motion to, a motion on the article?
Mr. Chairman, this is final. I'll make a motion to accept, but to recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Berthium. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Goodrich seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Article 5 is a annual article. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Mrs. Goodrich makes a motion to recommend. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Berthium seconds it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Article 6? Yes, Mr. Kazanovich. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I just want to let the board know, Article 6 through 11 are annual standard warrant articles that appear on the warrant every year, so I don't know if there is a recommendation to take those all together?
I think that is an excellent idea. Thank you. Is there any questions on Articles 6 through 11? Seeing none. Is there a motion to take them as a whole and make a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to rec, to take them together and recommend on all articles.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Berthium seconds. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Lillibity?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right.
Mr. Coppins?
Mrs. Jacobson? Yes.
I believe, I believe, I, it's hard to tell on the screen, but I believe Mr. Coil may be on the line? Yes, he is.
Okay. I was just going to turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson because it looked like she, she was available. Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I reached out, Mr. Coil, deputy, is on the line, so he can speak to Article 27, 28, 29, and 30.
Okay. Sounds good.
Hi, Bill.
You're under no obligation, Mr. Coil. But if you have anything to share on any of these, any information to share on these, please go right ahead.
Certainly. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I don't have the article numbers in front of me. I'm looking at the articles. We have two articles that were relative to Pin Rock Pump Station. One is, one is for $25,000 and then one is to reappropriate $16,000. Those two articles are being combined to allow us to be able to purchase a new channel grinder for the Pin Rock Pump Station.
Okay.
The, the, in the other article, I can explain as well, the $300,000 article is, there is a sewer main on the Bancroft Street Bridge that is deteriorating and these funds would be used to allocate the replacement of that line. It's currently under design and in need of replacement. And the last article is $3,000 from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account. The $3,000 would be used to plant new trees, to compensate for the trees that were removed in the past couple of years, the dead trees that were taken down. So these would be new plantings.
Thank you. Is there any board questions on any of the articles, 27 through 30, for Mr. Coil? Hearing none. I just had one on Article 28, which is the amendment to Article 16 of the '24 Fall Town Meeting, a balance of 16, almost $17,000. Where is that just a remainder from a project undertaken at that time?
Yes. The, the work was completed and I believe there was a significant savings because the DPW staff had done quite a bit of the work in-house, so there was a remaining balance of $16,858.45. So the work was completed.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Coil, can I just ask a question? I know this pre, precedes your, you're taking responsibility for the DPW. This was a 2004 warrant article. When was the work completed? If you, if you have that available to you, I'm just.
I couldn't have the exact information, Dan. I can tell you that. I, I couldn't have the exact information, Dan. I can tell you that the, there was additional work done this past year on that same biofilter to replace the materials there. So I, I can't tell you if that was, work that was done many years later, and work was done back in 2005, and, and additional work was completed. But I can tell you, the filter has just been repaired recently, and we don't anticipate any additional work anytime near the end.
Thank you so much. Is there any other board questions for these articles? If not, is there a motion to take Articles Twenty-seven through Thirty as one and a motion on those articles?
Mr. Chair, this is Lionel. I'll make a motion to take Articles Twenty-seven through Thirty as one and recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Berthium. Is there any, is there a second? Sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Second from Mrs. Goodrich. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bill, for joining us tonight and taking time out of your, your schedule to talk to us about these. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. So I think that is all of the ones that are not Town Manager articles. So I don't know if the Town Manager has anything to discuss. There are several articles. I know several of them are annual, but I want to give you the opportunity, Mrs. Jacobson, if you have anything on articles, especially, I'm looking at Twenty-five, Twenty-six, or Twenty-four, or anything you'd like to discuss on the warrant.
Through the chair, why don't I start with Article Twelve, and I'm going to turn to Ed for a minute. But as you mentioned, Article Twelve is our annual vote to appropriate $500,000 to our OPEB Liability Trust Fund. Given the current situation and uncertainties with regard to the COVID situation, I'm going to turn to Ed to speak to this one.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie, and through the board. Certainly, I think Julie underscored the, the concern about the uncertainty that we're looking at. This may be an area where, this is a large sum of money. This may go a long way in offsetting a significant revenue loss. So I think at this point in time, I would ask the board that they, that we hold this warrant article. Certainly, we were hoping to get some information from the state that would allow us to either address a, a, maybe a, a different request or eliminate it entirely. Certainly, if this, if this is something that we would consider deferring for a one-year period, I would like to say that this would be a priority of town administration to reinstate this annual funding in subsequent years' budgets. But certainly, we know we, we have a, we're facing a, it's a multiple level of, of uncertainty and, and revenue loss that we have to address in the short term and, and try to come up with a long-term plan to weather out this storm. So I'm asking at this point in time that we put this Article Twelve on hold.
Okay, so you'd want us to take, go ahead, Mr. Kavanovich, sorry.
Hopefully, hopefully, some information, honor before June 2nd, that will allow us to either A, postpone this indefinitely, maybe allow us to bring something back at the Fall Town Meeting, or maybe defer this level of contribution for a one-year period of time.
Okay. All right, hearing that, why don't we take a motion? Mrs. Goodrich, go please, go ahead.
I make a motion that we take no action at this time.
Very good. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Berthium seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We, we have to do the roll call. Sorry, Mrs. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. I'll turn it back to Mrs. Jacobson for any further comment, or any, on any of the other articles, or if there is none, we can certainly...
Through the chair, Articles Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six are all related to the Penrose Property ultimate purchase of the Mary D. Stone School, which is right now on schedule for sometime in mid to late June. Three easements I've talked about a lot, so I won't go into too much detail because I think we've brought it up at every meeting, and I don't want to be redundant. But for the public to hear, there are three easements that are required to make this project work. We already have town meeting approval to dispose of the property through a sale to Penrose, so that's already set. But these are, there are three easements. So just very briefly, Article Twenty-four would be Penrose, the developer, giving an easement to the town of Auburn to allow us to pass and repass over what is commonly referred to as the driveway that goes from the parking lot, Town Hall in the back, down to the property. By giving us that easement, that will enable residents who are going to the field, particularly handicapped residents who are going to the field, or going to the playground, to be able to go down that driveway and park close to the field. We're asking all other visitors to the playground and to the field to use the upper levels that is owned by the town behind Town Hall. But that easement will benefit our handicapped residents who want to drive down and get closer to the field. Likewise, that's Article Twenty-four. Article Twenty-five would be Penrose in return, excuse me, us, the town in return, giving to Penrose an easement that runs parallel to the border of the field and the playground. So Penrose can put additional handicap parking spaces there for their residents and for their visitors to their property, but also with the understanding that occasionally, if we do have a handicapped resident that wants to go, get to the field or get to the playground, they would be welcome to use those spaces as well. And then, last easement is an easement along where the retaining wall is. If you face Mary D. from Church Street, along the right side of the property, there's a retaining wall. The top of that retaining wall is town-owned property. That's actually the parking lot, excuse me, for Town Hall. And this would be, we would grant an easement for Penrose to be able to access that retaining wall area for landscaping purposes. Because it's on a hill, they may have to access it from the town parking lot to do their maintenance and their landscaping, as opposed to from the parking lot down below.
Okay. All right. So by my reckoning, we have Town Manager items. We have Article Two, which is the elected officials' compensation. Twenty-one is monies for Mary D. and JB. That's an annual. And Mrs. Jacobson just gave us a, a great synopsis of Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six. Is there a motion to take these articles as one and a recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we take them as one and we recommend on all articles.
Mr. Chairman? Mrs. Goodrich? Yes, Mr. LaLiberty?
I would ask that Article Two not be included in the, in with the rest of the articles.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich, are you okay with amending your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, can I ask one question through Ju, through Julie?
Of course, Mr. Kavanovich. Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you. Julie, Article Twenty-one, I just picked up on this. Do we want to remove Mary D. Stone School now?
Yes, I, I just noticed that myself. Ed, if you noticed, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this amount has been reduced from prior years because we anticipate selling the Mary D. Stone School for the coming fiscal year. We wouldn't have to have any maintenance funds in there right now. So that $25,000 would be for the Julia Bancroft School building, not for Mary D. Stone. So we can make sure we just remove the Mary D. Stone building from it and keep the Julia Bancroft there. Thanks, Ed.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you both. Okay, so Mrs. Goodrich has agreed to amend her motion to only take Articles Twenty-one, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six as a whole, and has motions, made a motion to recommend. Is there a second on that motion? Mr. Berthium seconds it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Okay, before we go back to Item Two, we still have Article Twenty-two and Twenty-three. These are the town clerk about adopting a section of the general law, and the town moderator. Would it be appropriate to have a motion to take them together and take no position at this time? Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to take Articles, uh, to take Articles...
Mr. LaLiberty, go ahead.
To take Articles Twenty-two and Twenty-three as one, and to take no action. I do have a question on Article Twenty-two.
Okay. I'm not sure the town clerk was going to be here tonight, but if you want to share your question with, with us, of course. Go, go right ahead, Mr. LaLiberty.
Uh, just if anyone was able to, I was, I just wanted to be sure I was reading Article Twenty-two correctly. So it's, this is just placing a cap on the amount of money that the town clerk could take in additionally, so capping it off at $2,000?
Yeah. Ed, I'm sorry.
Fox, I believe she currently, the clerk currently receives compensation. It's either $800 or $1,000 annually. This would allow her to get up to $2,000 annually.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is... Yep, go ahead, Mr. Berthium, sorry.
This is Lionel. Point of process, I'll, I'll second Mr. LaLiberty's motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. All right, I think our final article is Two. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. LaLiberty, as he had, he must have a question on this one.
Uh, I, well, I just asked to separate it because I didn't want to vote to recommend. I was going to make a motion to take no action on Article Two because of the uncertainty with the town's financial position due to the COVID pandemic.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion...
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Goodrich seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so we are, we're done with that for the moment. I would ask that we take Items Five A and Five B out of order. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Liberty made the motion, and Mr. Berthium seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are on Town Manager items, Five A and Five B. Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you. Both of these items are related to Faith Avenue, and just by way of history, probably a good year and a half ago, town meeting voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, town meeting voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit legislation that then passed about a year ago, which would enable the town to accept a portion of Faith Ave. as a new town road, and to discontinue a portion of Faith Ave. that would then go to the property owner. And that legislation passed and became law, and since that time, our town council, Bob Henigan, has been working with the property owners' council to develop the language for the vote in anticipation of the planning board being ready to move forward on this. So at this point, it is my understanding that everything is in order, and the board at this point, per the law, is able to go forward and accept the new road, as well as to vote to discontinue a portion. And I know Bill Coyle is still on the line with us, so I'm going to just ask Bill if there's anything additional. He wants to add to this, but it's my understanding that everything is ready to move forward.
Yes, Julie, that's correct. Through the chair, we did the inspections. We reviewed the project, created the punch list, and all the punch list items have been addressed.
Okay. Do members have questions? Seeing none, who, who would like to read this incredibly long motion that is necessary? On the acceptance of the new Faith Ave. That is, yes, that's the first item. Any volunteers?
I moved that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to the authority granted to it by Chapter Three Hundred and Forty-two of the Acts of 2018, except as a new town way, a subdivision roadway on property located at Faith Avenue and Washington Street in the town of Auburn, as shown as parcel B, not a building lot, on a plan entitled Plan of Acceptance, prepared by Waterman Design Associates dated September Eighteenth, 2019, and recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book Nine Hundred and Forty-eight, Plan Thirty-nine, which new town way was constructed by Mossad Family LLC at its own expense in accordance with the decision issued by the Auburn Planning Board dated November Seventh of 2017.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Item Five B, there is a shorter motion on the discontinuance of a portion of Faith Ave. Is someone willing to read this, please?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move, move that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to the authority granted to it by Chapter Three Forty-two of the Acts of 2018, discontinue as a town way that portion of Faith Ave, shown as portion of Faith Ave, to be discontinued and abandoned in three notations on a plan entitled Plan of Acceptance, prepared by... Waterman Design Associates, dated September 18, 2019, and recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 948, Plan 39.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go from the top to, again, with Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
From the bottom, yes.
No, I'm voting last, so I'm the bottom. The chair votes yes. It is unanimous, thank you. And if we could just take, finally, Item 4D out of order, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you, Lionel. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Yes, we have to do the roll call again, sorry. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so this is a request for a recognition letter for a town resident on her 95th birthday, Jane Van Winkle. About a week or so ago was her birthday, some friends and loved ones decided to have a car parade, which seems to be gaining in popularity on her 95th birthday because they couldn't physically be with her. So the town resident asked that we issue a recognition letter for Mrs. Van Winkle, and I don't know if there's any questions, comments, concerns, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Lionel. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call again, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is unanimous, thank you. So we go back to Board of Selectmen Item 4A, I'm going to recognize Mr. LaLiberty at this time.
Would help if I unmuted. Mr. Chairman, since it is my last meeting, I just wanted to give a, hopefully, brief few remarks, saying goodbye to everyone and wishing you all the best. So again, hopefully this will be brief. I just want to start by saying that I've been flattered and greatly appreciate all the requests from friends, family, colleagues, and constituents to run for a second term. I didn't come to the decision easily, and I did bounce back and forth several times before ultimately deciding not to run. In the end, I felt that I could not guarantee that I would be staying in Auburn over the next three years, and I didn't want to ask the residents to support me again if I could not finish the term. Before I say anything else, I want to say thank you to Auburn, to the people of Auburn and the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve you and the town for these past three years. It's been an incredible honor, especially for someone my age, and it's not something that I'm going to forget. I especially want to thank all of those that greeted Nicole and I at your doors with immense kindness back in 2016 and 2017 when I ran. While not everyone is friendly at the door, and anyone who has ever canvassed can tell you that, the overwhelming kindness of strangers always drown out any negativity that I experienced here in town. And those brief exchanges with the residents made me realize and appreciate just how far a very short and pleasant conversation with someone can go at improving your day and overall mood, especially to a young man who had just finished high school and really had no idea what he was doing or getting himself into. I do want to say a quick thanks to Nick Hammond, as his campaign was actually the first municipal campaign that I had ever worked on, so it was really through him that I got introduced to Auburn Municipal Government, and my interest in municipal government has now spilled over into my academic life as well. So thank you there for really starting this, what has snowballed into the last three years. And of course, this is probably the most important part of this. I want to thank my mother. She actually once told me that I could go into any professional field that I wanted, as long as it wasn't politics. So to my mom, thank you for supporting me every step of the way, despite my complete disregarding that request. Happy belated Mother's Day. So my time on the board has been a completely unique endeavor, and it has taught me a number of lessons. A lot of people ask me how I was liking my time on the board, and I always grappled with how I was actually going to answer that question. But overall, it has been a truly positive experience that I will look back on fondly. Some of the lessons that I learned came directly from the people that I worked with, and one of them specifically I want to talk about. So this was, the lesson that I learned was the fact that it's okay to not know something. So naturally, when I first sat at the Board of Selectmen table in May of 2017, I felt afraid to ask questions about certain material, particularly finance, because I was under the impression that everyone who was already at the meeting had learned all of this before they got to the board, and so I was the odd person out, so I was afraid to ask some of the things. Then one day, a fellow board member came up to me, and I'm not going to call anyone out, but they told me that the, when they first ran for office in town for a position, they actually didn't know what the position did, or weren't entirely sure what the position did. And so that, that advice was actually very comforting and led to quite a few more questions to our town manager, Mrs. Jacobson, and various department heads. So thank you to that board member, you know who you are, and this is a perfect transition to thanking the department head specifically and town administration, not only for all that you've done for the town, but also for taking time to answer my many questions over the last three years. Julie, you've led a tremendous team of truly dedicated people, and it's been a privilege to learn from you over the years, and an opportunity that not many people get, especially considering you are a nationally recognized town manager. I mean, you are just one of, one of the best, so I truly thank you for that opportunity. Specifically, I do also want to single out Darlene Coyle for her work on the plastic bag reduction ballot, which you all know was, was very important to me and something that I wanted to see happen, so I do want to thank Darlene for her work on that, and also for her work battling the COVID-19 health crisis currently. So I believe the town is in fantastic hands there and under the guidance of Mrs. Jacobson. To my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for mentoring me and guiding me over the past three years. I was asked many times by different people if any of the board members were ever turned off or put off by having someone as young as me on the board with them. But from the moment I first walked into the Board of Selectmen's room, I did feel welcomed by everyone and that I was treated as a completely equal colleague, and not just by my fellow board members, but from everyone in town administration and every town employee, and I do appreciate that. And in fact, each member of the board at one point or another invited me out for a coffee, meal, or a drink after I was, I had reached the legal age. And so I want to sincerely thank all of you for that, because despite the pessimistic view that politics is inherently a divisive endeavor, I believe it can bring people together. And three years ago, I came into that room as a stranger, and I believe that now I'm leaving as a friend. To Lionel in particular, I want to thank you for being a great first political opponent and for your immediate and lasting friendship on the board as soon as I was elected. In my final note against the residents, I want to tell you to please continue to stay involved. Unfortunately, communities across Massachusetts have been met with declining voter turnout in local elections, and with the outbreak of COVID-19, I don't think that that's going to help at any. Mr. Carpenter and I, unfortunately, again, because of COVID-19, were not able to get as far with the Subcommittee on Voter Turnout as I would have liked, and it's still my hope that the board will pick up where we left off and continue to work on increasing voter turnout in future elections. I think that one good thing that has come out of this pandemic is that now we've had remote participation with residents, so hopefully that's something the board in the future can look back to and see if maybe it is a possibility for the future. And on the subject of citizens' engagement, there is an election in eight days, so be sure to cast your vote either in person or by mail, preferably by mail, which you can do. And with that, I want to wish the best of luck to Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Page, and Chief Lucas going forward. Thank you, everyone, and Godspeed, Auburn.
Thank you, Mr. LaLiberty. I'm going to open it up to anyone who might have something to share at this particular moment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say a couple of quick words. Tristan, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, right from the first campaign against each other, you're unbelievable acting as a seasoned candidate, certainly not a kid just out of high school running for selectmen. So I think that impressed me the most right from the start, and was happy to see that, you know, one of us had to win the first one, and I was happy to see that you stuck with it and got in, because I really look forward to working with somebody that acted as professional as you did. You know, I feel like the campaign that we ran was how all campaigns should be run, you know, across the, basically, street as people were driving in for the initial election, and the two of us were talking, chatting, really being very respectful on both sides of the street. That's the way every campaign should be run, and you as a, as a young candidate just were very, very impressive, as has your three years as selectmen. So I've enjoyed our friendship and will continue to enjoy our friendship, and definitely have enjoyed these three years on the board, and I wish you the best with all of your future political or business endeavors.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tristan, I just want to say a few briefer words as well. It really has been a pleasure working with you, you know, especially, especially this last year, when I moved my seat down to the end next to you, and we kind of built this camaraderie and bond, and, you know, you, everything, every vote you took, you brought, you know, a careful, thoughtful approach to. You know, you mentioned your age. I never thought about it. I never thought about you being young. You were just, you were a member of the board who just put your all into it, and I truly, truly appreciate that. You know, you gave, you gave me things to think about that, you know, in a different way that I might not have thought about them. You are respectful to everyone. I especially enjoyed the stories of, you know, that you shared with me, of comments your mom would make after the, being a mom of older boys, I could just feel her pride when you shared those stories, and I know she's watching tonight, and she has every reason to be proud of you, because you are going to do great things in the next year and several years. And, you know, I'm sure that we'll be hearing about you and reading about you, because you have such a passion for what you do, but in an honest way, with such integrity, that you're going to go places, you're going to, you're going to be loved by everyone around you, and you're going to make a difference in this world. So you'll be missed, but I know that, that you're going to do great things, so congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also...
Of course, Mrs. Jacobson, go ahead.
Thank you. Tristan, I've had several conversations with you over the last couple of years, privately, publicly, and I just can't say enough what a pleasure it's been to work for you. As, as my youngest boss, and I wouldn't, I would never, like Mrs. Goodrich said, don't think of your age, but what I like that you've brought to the table always is just a fresh outlook. And regardless of age, it's just nice to have somebody come onto the board and be willing to look at all sides of an issue, and you've always been professional, you're fair, you're equitable, you treat everybody kindly, and really, you are a true gentleman in every aspect of your dealing with both me, all the members of our town administration, and seeing you out in the community. You really represent the town of Auburn so well. When you go to events, we've been to ribbon cutting events, we've been to many events together, and I truly have always been impressed with how you handle yourself publicly, with the residents, with the business community, and again, with all of us in town administration. I think I can speak for everybody in our administration, all the department heads and all the employees, everyone who's had any kind of dealings with you, any kind of conversations, any meetings with you, you've always been respectful, and as Mrs. Goodrich said, you do bring a different perspective. Sometimes it makes all of us think, gee, we never looked at it from that way, and I will really miss that. I will miss working for you, and I agree, I think you're going to do great things in the future. I wish it was still with the town of Auburn, but we thank you for the time that you did put in and for all of your contributions to all of us at town administration, and best wishes to you.
Well, before I say yes, Ed, go right ahead.
I would just like to say a few words to Tristan. So first, Tristan, I'd like to thank you, certainly, for your dedication in your three years of service as a board member. I know it was very difficult, you know, juggling the demands of school, as well as the demands put upon you by being an active member of the board. I know it wasn't easy while you were in grad school. I really admire your hard work and your dedication to the profession, so it's certainly been an honor and a privilege to work with you over the last three years, and I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you and your family the best in whatever future endeavors you may encounter. So good luck, my friend.
Thank you. And I also actually have to say thank you to you for being someone to talk to about my thesis, because there aren't that many people interested in tax classification in Massachusetts, so thank you for that.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
Is there anyone else on, who would like to speak before we call this to a close? I see several active little boxes, so even if you're a member of the public, which it shouldn't be even, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to say something, please just state your name and your address, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Hearing none, I guess I get less privilege, so everybody stole all the good lines, which they always do, but that's good, because it means I get to say much less, which is I will say, I will echo everybody's comments. I think you've done a tremendous job, Tristan, which I knew you would. I remember meeting you many, what, four years ago now, when you reached out to learn something about this in your first run, and, you know, you clearly at that point showed a determination, which many people have already pointed out. which many people have already pointed out, but stood out to me to the point that, you know, even though there was other candidates in the race, I got to vote for you twice. So even though you're not running again, I got to vote for you twice. So that's always a good thing. But I will miss your outputs and your input on the board. I think you've brought a new perspective, and I hope that you will inspire and have inspired, which I do believe you have, people of your own age and people who might even be a little younger through your involvement in the We the People program, you know, and get some of the younger folks to realize that, yes, I can contribute to my town. I don't have to wait. I can make a difference now. And the entry into local government is a lot easier than, shall we say, some other levels of government, but the work is more rewarding, and you can see results at the local level, probably a lot easier than you can at the state or the federal level, not that they aren't meaningful and important as we know. But, you know, it's been a great pleasure to have the opportunity to serve with you. I think you've made me a better board member, and I just wish you the best of luck, and hopefully, we'll be seeing you back. We don't want you moving to some other town. We want you to come back here and continue your service here, and whether that be at the local level, the state level, or the federal level. I look forward to seeing more of you and hearing more of your ideas. So good luck, and thank you for everything, and you will be missed on the board.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone. I do want to just point out that in 2017, when I first won a seat on the board, Nicole had actually given me a book called Images of Auburn, which I think most of you have already read through. I know one was being passed around through the department, and I'm treating it, my copy, as sort of a yearbook, if you will, for the last three years. So I've left my copy at Town Hall, and I know the pandemic, that may not be a thing that's possible right now, but I am asking that everyone at some point, at your convenience, maybe when you go in to sign the warrant, just sign wherever you like in the book. If there's a particular picture that you would like. Actually, some of the images were donated by Ken, so it's unfortunate that now he can't sign it, because I'm sure he would have, he'd be able to sign next to Holstrom Market. But, and then that goes for department heads too as well, if they're available to sign it. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think the only remaining items are minutes from April 13th and March 9th. Are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing none, they will be accepted as submitted. And with that, thank you to everybody, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. LaLiberty makes the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment before we adjourn.
Okay.
I know right at the top of the meeting, it was made mention that Mr. Holstrom had to resign, and I'd like to make a few comments about him as well.
Okay.
So I believe that, you know, that Mr. Holstrom deserves an incredible amount of respect from this town, not just on his tenure as a board member and stepping down as chairman of the board. I know it was an extremely difficult decision that he and his wife needed to make. It was a life decision that was for their best interest, for what they want to accomplish in their retirement. Serving on the board with Kenny, serving on Auburn Fire Department with Kenny, he was nothing short of the perfect gentleman, nothing short of the perfect person to rely on, the person to teach. He was always, always willing to lend a hand and give advice and listen to any of us. He really, I can't even believe that I'm talking about Ken Holstrom not being an Auburn town resident. It's very emotional to have him gone. He's just met right from, as Tristan mentioned, his family's Holstrom's market, all the way up from what he and his brother Gordon did with the fire department, and always, always, always being a volunteer, being involved on multiple, multiple committees. He's just a good friend, was a great board member with us, and he's just going to be incredibly missed. So I, words can't even explain the loss that, you know, thank God, it's a loss of him just moving out of town, but the loss that this town is having by not having Ken Holstrom as part of it. So, you know, I wish, Ken, I wish you were here in person to, you know, to, you know, see that we all appreciate you, and I wish you and Kim the ultimate best and a long, happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we do take a second on that, I intended to speak offline with the other members about honoring Ken in a different way. So it was not in any way, I don't want anybody in the public or on the board thinking that this was an oversight. This was simply Tristan's last meeting. I thought it was appropriate that he have his last meeting and that we find it appropriate way to honor Mr. Holstrom in his service. I thank Lionel, Mr. Berthew, for sharing his thoughts at this time. Certainly, they are welcome, and I'm sure shared by the board, and I'm sure we will get an opportunity to hear more about that at a different time. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mr. Captain, may I just comment on what you just said?
Yes.
So, you know, when I looked at the agenda and then heard earlier, you mentioned that Mr. Holstrom was not going to be here, and I know we can't make that motion now because it's not on the agenda, but I'm hoping that the board would support inviting not just Mr. Holstrom in, but Mrs. Holstrom in. I mean, we, you know, I think Mr. Berthew just outlined part of his service to this town, but please keep in mind that Mrs. Holstrom has served this town well as a town meeting member, finance committee member, executive assistant to the town, I think we called him executive secretary before the charter change. And I just, I hope that the board would consider inviting both Ms. Holstrom and Mrs. Holstrom in to properly thank them for their service. As Ken told me, 140 years of Holstrom's being in town, and they've moved, and I wish them well in their retirement. Theirs house sold quickly, and now we're expected to be gone this fast. So I hope that there'll be some consideration for inviting them into a meeting. Thank you.
I'm sure that will happen. Absolutely.
I'm happy to make that.
Go ahead, Mrs. Goodrich.
I'm happy to make that second, if that's what you would like, now.
That would be great. Thank you. And we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. By the final roll call, vote of the night, Mrs. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mr. Berthew.
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty.
Aye, yes.
Okay. And the chair votes yes. We stand in adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for everything, and have a good rest of your week. Happy belated Mother's Day to all those. Hopefully, you got to have some celebration, even under these different circumstances we all find ourselves in. But we can always find a way or a way to celebrate the people who are special in our lives. So I wish you all a good night and a belated happy Mother's Day and a good week ahead. Take care.